We say in the Father, we thank you for this people to our state that you provided for us. And we just ask you to go with us today in this meeting. And thank you for pleasing in your eyes in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. We may go to the one we have got tonight, but just plenty more to be. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Oh, no, I want to do it till my question of the... My question on here, it's in the room.
Okay.
So, do you get my help?
But this is okay, so. You just want to open it up for...
Is that what you... You had to follow that through from here? Still following your... As per the... It's still for you.
All right, so with that being said, there's Mr. Fisher.
Agenda.
Get agenda.
So with that being said, uh...
Oh, well...
Roll it off, okay? We'll do it like a regular meeting, yeah? All right, so Curtis is not here. Then he is here, Dennis is here, Sue is here, Tyler is here. Did y'all see that Sherry was... She's on Zoom.
Yep.
Okay? And then the man is here, and this is him, he's here, stay. We got, and Sherry is on the Zoom, and so the Father praises the Council of Superior. And he is...
Very much so.
And we're going to go on to the other costs, so with that. And then I will, uh, did everybody get a minute, can I just look at the minutes from the last one?
Agenda.
Agenda.
Move through with agenda.
The Father, we say, is in all those papers, six to five, saying not. Those, same as Sherry's. And next to them, yes.
Move through with Matt's agenda, that's what I'm hearing.
And the Father, we say, all those papers, six to five, saying not. Those, same as Sherry's. That's what we've had in touch with.
He didn't put anything about the Council of Lords.
Don't forget.
Move, move through with the minutes, she's been Councilman.
And then we'll probably move to say that all those papers, six to five, saying not. Those, same as Sherry's. All right. With that, I'm going to turn it back over.
Okay, so first up, um, under this station, we're going to do a status update from ABM. We mostly are doing this because we have two new members in the council, so we want to get everybody up, to speed up what's going on with the ABM.
All right, so glad each of you, Mayor, Councilmen, my name is Vic Field, and I represent the company of ABM. I have with me tonight Tracy Vice, who also works with ABM, and by the end of that page, hello. We've sort of probably do it a year and a half.
It is.
Maybe a little bit longer. And I was joking to you, I can remove the cover, and this is a marathon, it's not a sprint. And it is. But it is a bullet marathon. I kind of want to bring you up to what we've done over the last time with the city. We kind of go back a little bit further to say, our goal, our objective is to work with the city. City, particularly Curtis and Sue, and issues that you may have through them. Look at ways we can improve the infrastructure, make upgrade improvements, at no upfront cost, and that would be self-funded, meaning that the improvements over time they can offset. And that's kind of what we said is our goal, where we began to do that, we've gone through the process quite a bit. So I want to kind of just come to you again and say, this is where we are, we're getting closer to the end, closer to rezoning Sue. Come back, hopefully in July, as we'll talk about in a few minutes to you. Kind of get a little bit more specific at that time, but at the same time, just bring you up to speed on where we are. If you have a few questions, or maybe we can answer those for you. And you should have got in your packet something that looks like this.
In the back.
And I'm kind of going to just go through that a little bit. I'm not going to read every day of the tour, we're all long people. And I'm not going to sit here and read to you, we're going to talk to you a little bit. What we've done up to this point is we've gone through the concept goal, we've made the suit, we've done one of their studies, we've selected, we've developed an master development agreement. And today, we're all kind of looking at status of where we are, and start outlining the next steps. In the process, it was very important for us to find out what's important to the city, to the town of Bronson. It's not Big Hill's plan, it's not ABM's plan, it's what would be the benefit for the town and the townspeople.
Here, it's just a form to unmute his mic. To mute his mic, give him a feedback.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry. It was pointed out very early that the town needed some form of a plan to upgrade infrastructure and help meet some of the town's objectives and goals. One of those issues that was critical was water, water meter replacement. And so we've begun to look at that. There are some upgrades needed at the wastewater treatment plant, there's some energy efficiencies in some of the buildings throughout the town. It is noted that the infrastructure in the town is a mix of old and new. Some of them are aging, and there's not really an apparent fix that is immediately available. And these issues can have an effect on the town being able to provide, meet the core mission of providing services. We are at a point where we've looked at, we've gone through, we've up, we've made notes, plans to make necessary upgrades, and we're meeting with Sue and Curtis and others, kind of outlining, we've built in the whole time. It's been a group project from day one. And we're getting to a point where Sue, we want to come back, present to Sue, Curtis, and then come back and present to you as a council as well. Hopefully, like I said, we're going to shoot before July 24th, and we're verifying the project. Tracy's going to come forward now and kind of talk about some of the things, because his mechanical knowledge is a lot greater than mine, and he can speak to the issues, particularly the water meters, in some ways, in terms that you can understand a lot better than I so, Tracy?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, my name is Tracy Vice. My role with ABM is Senior Technical Developer, and I lead the development team to analyze the infrastructure for cities, colleges, and other institutions. Here in Bronson, I was brought in to evaluate Town Hall, this building, the old fire station, the athletic complex, and to take a look at your public water distribution system. So I want to go through each of these locations very thin, give you the highlights of what I've learned, and where I think we can help you shore up the infrastructure. For Town Hall, there are four air conditioning systems that operate at the, they're, they're heat pumps. Each of them are beyond their expected life, and one of them is no longer functioning, has run to fail. I'm recommending that we replace all of those units with new commercial heat pumps, as well as bipolar ionization air treatment to help with the purification of the return air, to help fight some of the new contaminants that we deal with in the sage of COVID and other air transmitted diseases. We also would like to include the interior and exterior LED lighting retrofits, as well as programmable thermostats that will allow the town to program the time of day and operation of the systems, primarily to save money and extend the life of those units. The next area that we looked at was this building and the old fire station. The air conditioners in this building have more than half of their useful life. They're reasonably new, they're not, they're not brand new, but there's a lot more likely to not be physically responsible to replace them at this time. But it would be a good move to install the air treatment systems and the program of the thermostats to allow you to have tighter control of your energy spend here. Also, the same with the lighting, retrofitting the older LED, the older fluorescent lighting technology with the LED technologies. And now that would be, in this room, we would recommend new fixtures in the surrounding spaces, retrofitting existing fixtures with new LED products. Over at the athletic complex, working with Mr. Stacy, he pointed out to me that there was an area of playground that was lacking sufficient security lighting. So I brought in electrical engineer, and we ran a photometric study of the playground area. And the diagram you see in your, in your packet is indicative of six new solar dust-to-dawn security lights. The blue dots on the picture indicate the location of the poles. The reason I picked solar is because there's no electrical infrastructure in place for those poles, and with the life expectancy of the product and the application, solar was a good fit to meet the needs of what we're looking for. Now, these are what we call bi-level lighting, so that if no one is in the park, the light levels are a little bit lower, so that the batteries are, last longer, and they don't wear out, because they get overused. As soon as someone walks into the park, the lighting levels come up, and you've got the maximum lighting. I've used these over the years, a lot of military installations, a lot of secure facilities in parking lots and walkways, and have excellent success with them. Over at the wastewater removal plant, again, working with Mr. Stacy, he asked that we consider what it would take to install a cover over the air compressors and the circulating pumps. Currently, they're exposed to the weather, they get a lot of abuse from the storms and the sunlight. So included in this package is to put a light gauge metal structure over the, the air compressors and circulating pumps, so that we have a little more protection for the equipment there, and maximize the maintenance and the repairs that may occur, that could shut down the treatment. Now, the main reason that I was brought in here was the discussion of the water meters. You know, out of the water meters, there are various number of sizes and types that are there, various manufacturers that are in place. We did a statistical sampling of the water meters, and we sent a batch of meters of all sizes to an independent testing laboratory, and it was determined that the existing water meters are only about 75% accurate. So our solution is to propose an automated water meter infrastructure, which includes new water meters that are 99% accurate for 20 years, a data management system, a billing software, and customer portal software, and a municipal work order software system. We determine this by a number of ways. One, you know, the town doesn't have a lot of employees in the utility department. So the automated meter infrastructure will allow the billing data to be collected a couple of times a month, and automatically brought into a software, which will generate the bill without tying up Mr. Stacy and his employees going around taking manual water meter readings. It's a very solid system, it's been proven all over the country in various yards and small municipalities, and there's a considerable benefit to the city. Currently, the revenue that you're losing, like I say, is 25% accuracy, so you're losing a lot of revenue to the city going through the meters, where the billing is not... In addition to the water meters, it was brought to my attention that there are water pressure problems around the city. When certain events happen around the city, that water pressure will drop in one area when you have a maintenance performed in another, or if a fire hydrant or some other event happens, that the water distribution is a difficulty. So we've identified one isolation valve off of one of the pipe feeds from the main water tower. We know that it's broken closed, which forces the water around the city in one direction. So currently, we've, we've figured out what the solution is to repair that valve and get the water feeding in both directions around the city. And also, Mr. Stacy has a, a number of isolation valves that are out across the town that he wants us to look at this week and include in this solution. I'll be back here in the town on Wednesday morning with the utilities engineer. We'll be working with, with Mr. Stacy to locate the valves that are the most critical, and figure out what it will take to get those valves repaired and back into the work order. And that is the, that is the extent of the technical briefing. I'll turn it back over to Vic.
I have a question about the water meters. Who, who pays for these water meters?
Well, the water meters will be funded by the, the energy saves in the revenue that is currently being lost. So it'll be no additional cost to the city. Florida statute mandates that these, these improvements must be self-funded.
Because see, I, I've heard this before, and I frankly spent money doing this and that and the other. I want to make sure that the city of Bronson is not doing double that. What I mean by that, when I'm paying for it, again, twice. Because it's never come up before, that we're going to do this, that, and the other, but it never happened.
To my knowledge, none of these types of things have been implemented in the past. I'd have to refer my questions to the council.
Well, what I'm going to do, Mr. Mayor, if you will, I'm going to get the G M over here, and we're going to look it up, and go through the next one, I'll show you what I've got.
Happy to do something, Vic.
It has its worth, with each of these things that Tracy was speaking about, lets us find benefits for the town. It is a proactive way to approach, approach addressing some critical infrastructure needs. It does modernize some of the critical infrastructure issues that you're dealing with. It allows the department to accompany, ABM, and we have a good track record of outstanding performance in governments all around. And it is a strategic, long-term approach to looking at your current infrastructure, and even things in the future, and on your handout, and I put it in there on purpose, I was at the last meeting. I put a hotline on the question mark, I did it on purpose, because I know that is in the very elementary beginning stage, there's something down the road that might occur, and this is compatible with that. So I wanted to know that upfront, it is something that can be built upon and be a part of. The next steps is I would like to, I do plan to make a suit between now and July 24th meeting. She will, she, I always come to her first and go over everything with her, I don't want this to be the first time she hears or sees something. And it hurt, and Curtis both, and Mr. Stacy. We value both of their input, and it's been a joint effort every step of the way. So we kind of come and talk to them, got things off of us, and we got things off of them that together we worked on. So we will do that prior to the July 24th, it's been to a meeting, and we'd like to come back at that meeting to seek authorization. We will have more, more answers and more information for you at that time. As we move forward, you can follow this page as well, it's kind of just outlined. We'll start as early as September with the, uh, the software being hit in place, that would have to be in place and operational before we pull the first meeting, before we move, then that part of it has to be in place, working. Can't work out anything that needs to be done, so we'll begin that as early as September. We'll start with the commercial installation of our water meters, partly in January, and then we'll move over to residential with the 24 years that goes forward. We know there's some grand issues that are going on, and we're working to come to it out, to make sure that all of those guidelines are followed, and we work with the town to make sure we follow those guidelines as specified. So we'll, and they want to sign off and agree later, then we'll do it in that respect. So that we can move forward in that respect. This page is just kind of a pie graph, basically, where it's what, Tracy was saying there. The way it's funded is you take the energy savings, your operational savings, and your increase in loss, your revenue, and from that you get a self-funded project. And that's kind of what we would keep bringing back in the July meeting, to say, this is what it can do, this is what it can afford, this is related work. And walk through that a little bit more detail. We understand government, we provide unique solutions to problems that you're facing, and we are 100% representative. In the last page, if you need to ask any questions, there's my contact information, please don't hesitate to reach out. I have my phone with me at all times, except Sunday during Sunday School and church. And I actually have it really, but I have it on mute. If you call or leave a message during church, Sunday School hour or church hour, I'll call you after church. With all of that, I have, if you have any other questions for Tracy or I, I'd be glad to answer at this point. But we do hope to come back to you in the July 24th meeting, a little bit more specific confirmation, but it felt like it was unfortunate of where we are at this point. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Information office? Our first budget workshop is Monday, July the 10th. We're doing this. 5:00 PM, here. Any questions on that? Get ready. And our next town council meeting will be July the 10th, at 6:00 AM. We'll be back in some part of the legislature July then. In the midst of, who's back, what we're talking, we'll be here on the 27th, at 4:00, at 1:00 AM, like it was today. And that's all that I have, is just anything else, too, that we have?
And of course, 4th of July celebration is Tuesday. 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock, whatever you want to call it, but we'll have food trucks, entertainment, a bounce house. Everybody's going to be taking turns symbolizing. In higher words, deny. Then this is not what that bounce house is.
The bounce house, that, I mean, you got a few of them that participate in that.
Right. So we're looking for...
Who's paying for that, is yours?
Insurance?
Yeah, that's for sure. You can't go with a kid, you hurt.
Fuck it, dog.
Everything towns are in territory.
Yeah, sure.
I'm on DL. You better bounce the bell on this.
You don't want your kid, I know.
Mine'll have to walk it off. We need more than this, eh?
And that's, that's it?
All right. All right, I'm off. So first up on my agenda is continuation of our last meeting, of course, on Monday, June 5th. We had a public workshop, a little, on the proposed rezoning from commercial to the recreational vehicle park. And next up on the agenda at this point, the council's going, the council in their capacity as the planning board is going to make a recommendation to the council at the next town council meeting. It sounds really confusing, but because the town of Bronson doesn't have a planning board, or a zoning board, they act in both capacities. So tonight, they're going to make that decision as a board, and recommend it to the board to actually vote on at the next meeting on July 10th. So tonight, we'll entertain, the council will entertain any comments from the public regarding the planning board voting on that rezoning for Anthony's Palavichia. You do have a letter from Ray and Mike Simic, that they just gave you, afford to make a consideration of that, no, as well. Do you guys want to speak?
Rezoning problem.
So Anthony's Palavichia put in a request to rezone the property from commercial to the recreational vehicle park. If you were at the public hearing, if you're on the...
No, no, but I never, Curtis wanted to be in that, never, but I don't have to.
All right, Ray, you want to speak?
I, I'm still talking.
Well, you didn't ask for permission.
Well, well, okay, and then I'm going to ask.
Okay, okay, okay. You, you just start talking all the time, so I'm sorry. But he's like, hold his hand up, and I'll, I'll let him talk first, okay? And then you can talk next.
Good evening, y'all. I'm very same, I can probably know that. I believe this project is spot zoning, and I want to read you the classic definition of spot zoning, and if you want to, I want to highlight some points. Classic definition of spot zoning is a small size of a parcel with not the sole defining characteristics of this spot zoning. Rather, the defining characteristic is the narrowness and unjustified nature of the benefits to a particular property owner to the detriment of the general lay-in use plan and public goals. The rezoning may provide unjustified special treatment to the benefits of a particular property owner while, while undermining the existing rights and use of the adjacent property owners. So what that tells, what I'm reading in that, that is this, uh, this narrowness and unjustified nature of benefits to our property owner. So we're trying to change a C1 to RV park, which is not in the LDR as... You're trying to do it under ordinance, and then in the LDR, and you're trying to fight me, but anyway, the real thing, the real issue we have is, you're undermining the pre-existing rights of the other property owners and adjacent property owners. So I believe this is spot zoning, and I'd like to see, maybe get an opinion from y'all, what you think of that.
So, in my opinion, he is not receiving special services or, he's, nothing is special. And that's what spot zoning is, is when somebody is receiving a special...
Treatment.
...opportunity to change something. This is not special. He is legally gone about the right way to do this. And unfortunately, just like this letter that y'all submitted, this letter is great, but the reason why you were asked at the other meeting, but not to...
That's immaterial, man, please don't go on, please don't go on, that's immaterial. It's immaterial, that letter is immaterial.
It matters, it matters, because the reason why they were asking you was not to get in your personal business. They were asking you about providing affordable housing in our area. That's what they were asking you about.
This is immaterial, but this is not affordable housing for what he's going for, it's temporary living accommodations.
But I'm telling you, that's the reason why you were asked about this. They were not trying to get personal.
We asked you in the letter, please don't bring that up, and you still do it.
Shouldn't have presented the, the letter, man, because that, that re, generated all of that. This is not spot zoning. Spot zoning is when he was receiving a special treatment, he's not.
Yeah, because all three of the surrounding areas are residential, and one is commercial, and the commercial only allows one residence, and you're trying to put 50 residences on there. So to me, that's special treatment, that's our opinion, you have your opinion, and I agree with that. If you have an opinion, everybody else has an opinion, so that's fine. So that can be celebratory, the spot zoning issue, if you're all thinking it's not spot zoning. Any other people that have an opinion on that? No, that's real, okay. And then, then we have, uh, we have a crime issue there with that many people on that, that little property. It's 50 sites, there was a husband and a wife pulled in there, 100 people.
Well, you know, honestly, that, that was my number one concern, was how many spots was going to be in that area. So I looked it up, and in the state of Florida, if you have an RV park, and this shocked me, but I promise you, if you have an RV park, you have to have 25 recreational vehicles per acre. This man has over eight. So if you look at the numbers, it's adequate. So if you look at the numbers, it's adequate. It's more than adequate. And that was my number one concern, was how many people were gonna be in that small spot. But when you look at the numbers, it's really not all that small. It's really a good piece of property when you look at the numbers. And I've got, I've got a spare one of these, if you want to look at it.
I know that, I know that.
Okay.
Ah, so it's 96 on it.
Okay. Okay.
So you're saying he can put 25 times 8?
No, no, no. First of all, he's only asking for 50, which I thought...
What do you tell us you can put?
You have to have at least one acre for 25, 200 of them. Yes, but...
No, you only put 96. Why, why, why your...
He's only asking for 50, and if we approve 50, that's all he's getting is 50.
Yeah, but still, you're surrounded by half of the lots, and I have a petition going, and I have a petition going around with 52 signatures. 92% of the people that we went around to four streets are against this. The town, the public is against this. So here's my petition.
That, that's not so. If you get things.
The ones we spoke...
You gotta, you gotta get 10% of the votes to have a legal petition.
Okay, how many ones do we have?
We got over 1,000, right?
Well, you got 200, they say.
900, yeah.
So he told you to hit 90 something?
90 something?
Yeah, you got...
Well, I'll be back for 90. I'll be back for 90.
Okay, well, that, that, that's your, that's your...
That you're right.
Can I step up and talk to Ray real quick?
Sure.
Can I step up and talk to Ray real quick, please? My name is Alexis Tacos.
Go ahead.
You guys are talking about numbers, okay? I know the maybe five or six streets that people were talked to. Maybe one person on every street, maybe two, said that they were with this. The rest of them, they signed it. It's plain as day. Nobody wants it. I mean, you guys are talking about numbers, and you're talking about, okay, this and that and the other. I mean, there's a big percentage. I mean, look at the names, look at the numbers. Look at the people all that signed all this. There's way more signatures than there were.
Probably, it still has to be 10% or whatever the voter thing, if you have a legal petition. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
No, no, we understand that.
You've got to understand that when you're talking about your opinion on whether it should go here or there or whatever, and you have to be talking from the legality of it, because we are, our hands are tied to the legality of the situation.
Exactly.
As much as, as much as I may not agree with something, I have to stand by what somebody legally applies for. And this man has legally applied, he's been about it the right way. And when I look, and when I look back and look at the numbers, I'm telling you, my number one concern is exactly what you said about how many people were gonna be in there. But when I look back and look at the numbers, and look at the room that's gonna be in there, four or 50 places, it kind of, you know, I had a question myself, because that's a lot of room for 50 spots compared to some of the RV parks.
Okay, but then you talk to a lot of people, and then the people are wondering, okay, so these kids can only stay here a month? So then we got all these people coming in every month, every month, boom, boom, this. So then, you know? And then everybody around us says, you know what? They're kids. Their kids walk to school. So who's gonna police all this? Who's gonna do all that? Who's gonna make sure all of this is going on, what's supposed to be? And then, when, anybody has to go out their front door, and they have to look at all of these, and then all the noise and everything else. I mean, there's something to be thought about. It's something to be thought about with all the people that signed the petitions too. And do math. Look at the addresses on the petition. Look at the people that signed it. And then look who did, on each street.
But if you look at the petition, you technically cannot look at the petition because it's not legal yet.
Okay, well, I mean, how many signatures, how many signatures there? Okay, so how many?
Yeah, I hope, I hope y'all understand exactly what she just, the book she took. And that is this. This board legally have to give every person on here the legal right to cross things, to do crossings.
And it's not about them.
If I turn him down, you may be the next one.
Right.
So I have to do, I have to go down the books by how it goes. Right now, what our legal advice to us is, that he has met all the criteria. Where we are at this point, the next, now, we've got to go to the next thing, is what I'm saying, okay? And firstly, like I say, I'm gonna give him all of his due diligence. I'm gonna give him his right to do whatever, because if I start sitting behind this board and start telling you that you can't do something with your own property, then we're in a different world, what we're living in right now, okay? And I don't want to go there. You don't want to either. No, that's true. Now, there is an LDR, there is an LDR we're supposed to abide by. I agree with that. There's one that we're supposed to abide by. So we can't just do... Right now, right now, that is not your place.
From what I understand, the town doesn't have a zoning committee. From what I understand, the town does not have a zoning committee. From what I understand, that, that there's no zoning committee in the town, so that you guys are gonna have to be responsible to make that decision after making the decision to be able to make that decision.
Right, right.
So here's what, soon, I want you to tell them what the next process is, okay?
Okay, so I want to address two things. So first and foremost, if you're gonna come back with a legal petition, petition, like councilor Shuler asked for, you need to make sure that it is 10% of registered voters in the town of Bronson. Because I looked at a lot of the people that you had in that last petition, and the people that spoke last time, they were not in city limits.
They lived, so you look, I said, what's their identity?
Not registered voters.
No, some of those people, they came before the council last time, were not in city limits.
Well, I'm not sure about that.
I'm just saying, if you want to, if you want to do it legally, if you want to do it legally, we have to make sure they're in town limits and they're registered voters. That's what they're asking.
Right, okay, so how many do we have? About 1100?
Roughly, registered voters, like I said.
These go to county, actually.
Is it voters or people who won't profit?
No.
Voters.
Those voters.
How do you get a registered voter?
And then, and then, and Ray, it has to, county has to certify each one. Each, each name on this, to make sure they're voters. Once that happens, it's not over. It has to go before everybody has to vote on it. It, it's not, everybody has to vote. And if, if the vote come up in your favor, well, that's the way it be. But not, it's not... But it has to be voted on. Don't forget that, by everybody.
So the second thing is, they're gonna make a decision as the planning board tonight. Again, this is not, we don't have a resolution or anything before the board.
That's, that's the path that I was on. That's what I was...
Right. At the next meeting, there'll be a resolution before the board as to whether or not they want to pass that and actually change the zoning. Tonight, again, they're just making a recommendation to the council. So this is not the final decision. There's still another meeting before that final decision is made.
That's what I was told to ask you all, to get a third-party study of this.
Third party?
So you're studying it, the county's studying it. And I believe we went over the third study, which is your staff report.
Right, so tell me, so Louis sort of...
So we're into the staff report now. He says this complies with the future plan, future use map. It does not. The future use map is C1. And so his state, his report is erroneous. That, that part of the report I want you to look at, then that's not true. You can go in the town hall and look at the map, and it's, it's future land use is, is C1, which is one residence and per acre. So that's an erroneous statement he made in his thing. But next, next on the list is a high noise level that's gonna be, be produced by 50 people or 100 people on eight acres. For instance, if that was a commercial building, you know, there would be noise from trucks or whatever. But it would fall under the C1. It would be torn. So there's gonna be a lot of noise there. And we just, the water guy was just here. What a coincidence. We're gonna put 50 slots there, and we don't have any water pressure. We need to fix our water pressure before you approve these, these subdivisions that are big. What if somebody's house next door catches on fire, and everybody, half of the people in the RV park have the water running, and we can't put out the fire because the fire hydrant has been broken?
Pressure and blowing are due, I think. I was gonna say that. Pressure and blowing are due.
It's not working. I just talked to somebody about it. It's not working.
Sound as if it's pressure and blowing.
And even your AVA report tells you that your water system of this, is desperate being a witness.
I, I need some repair.
Consider that, when you consider whether you're gonna approve this, this 50-slot RV park, when we don't even have water, and we have another one that's gonna come in front of the board right down on Main Street that has issues too, that has dirt-acre lots. Well, the LDR doesn't have a 3-acre lot, so we're gonna have to have some kind of variance on that. But before we approve those 52 houses in there, let's please get our water check. Does that make sense? Okay, and then when we want the temporary living, okay? The ordinance reads as temporary living accommodations. And the third-party study, staff report, whatever you want to call it, also says that, what was that? What was I just saying? What I got?
It's alright, Ray.
Temporary living. Oh, yeah, temporary living. The Florida statute says temporary living is no longer than six months. Okay, this town council, not all, not all the members of town council, okay? Because we have new ones, and welcome aboard. Approved the RV park on the outskirts of town. And I want you to, if you've been thinking about that RV park, I want you to look at what's really going on there. That RV park was surrounded by agriculture. Therefore, putting a, having density here doesn't matter as much as if you put a smack dab in a metal old residential. But if you go online to that RV park, that has the ordinance, this ordinance that you're using, they advertise six months, if you rent by the month, up to six months, it's 500 bucks. And if you rent after six months, it's 475, on the seventh month. So we did answer this temporary living, and who's gonna police that? Because nobody's policing the one down there. So how are we gonna stop people from living there permanently when the ordinance clearly says it's temporary living facility? So that's a big issue to me, because you're gonna have people, and a lady testified last time I was here, that her house burned down, she's gonna move in there full-time. Well, you can't move in full-time if the ordinance has a temporary living facility. So you need some kind of structure in place if you're gonna use that ordinance that states that stuff and that staff report that states that stuff. You have to put something in place to, to regulate this. So there's many issues, environmental issues, the water is one thing, we can't even pump the water down there probably. The sewer, if it was a commercial building, it would be one commercial building. It might use more water than a residence, and one residence. So that would be two uses of water. But think about the sewer now. You're gonna dump 50 residences on eight acres. And town of Bronson requires a half acre for one septic tank. So now we're gonna change over from this, what we've been doing in the past, one, one, if, one, one, if I said one acre, I meant one half acre for a septic tank. Now we're gonna change to let one ninth of an acre dump on the septic tank. So we have a septic tank issue. Animal control, we have no animal control. We have cats running around all over Bronson, down on Main Street, everywhere, over by the bus bar, everything. We have no pest, uh, animal control. So how are we gonna control the dogs who come there and the animals there? Then we have a highway issue. If you're still thinking about the one that was down on 27, that has a four-lane, a four-lane highway. You see the big water pumps with the, with the bar behind them? Takes quite a bit for that to turn. Now we're trying to stick a 50-inch RV park on 24 that only has one lane going each way. So imagine, not to mention the schools right there, but that's a whole number issue. Imagine trying to pull those, that big RVs into that campsite in a traffic congestion that's gonna create. So the, that concludes my problems with this, with this project. And I hope you can share them dearly and take it for time.
Alright, alright. I'm logic.
Thank you, brother Ray. Uh, I'm gonna say this, I didn't go to the bathroom. Way is right by what he's talking about. What, you're not really remembering when you built that fire station. What somebody's not remembering, you build a fire station, then have to walk it. Somebody should have made, if you build a fire station, you should have walk. Now, what I'm saying is, the planning committee of that, really screwed up. Now, we got...
It was a broken pipe, so they hadn't cut the water off.
Didn't have a trash. They were talking about trash. You didn't have a trash.
Right.
At the beginning, when they had to drill the wall to do the fire suppression system.
Oh, you got it all. They didn't have a trash. Somebody up here, y'all gotta... Somebody didn't think, you know, they need some walk. Nobody would think.
The planning council, the planning council had nothing to do with, with that fire station being built.
Well, who has nothing to do with it? Was it just them?
No, we got, we got to go, we got to get out of here. Let's go oversee.
Uh, yeah. But anyway, let's get back to another, I got this police up here. We got here this time, a road. A road, a road street, and that's all first, about the church.
Back there.
I care about you.
I care. Yeah, well, it doesn't...
Back there.
I get in there.
Why do you?
Over there. That, that road was, was put in.
I just got my face.
Yeah, that, by there. That road was put in, and I really feel, and you're gonna see on it, is that it wasn't put in the right way. They got cheap ground. That road right now might well be done. But this town stayed on the real rock. And I know we screwed it up, but I don't say nothing yet. I'm in the mess again. Well, you know, I'm on top of it. There were a lot of stuff around here. But let's get back to, what I learned last week, I assume, about the food, I think. They got canceled, blah, blah, blah. But what that need, was the lady that answered the phone, would make that. She didn't know that. But what I'm saying, we don't have no communication up in there.
So I, so I actually stopped by the park two times on Friday to shoot, to tell people, just in case somebody was sitting there in the heat. And a lot of times, I found people, and I told them that it was rescheduled for today. And I also told them that it would be a good idea to get on this little line system that we soon got set up at town hall, where you can receive a text message about emergency situations, because I received a text about it.
Okay, that, that's my point. My point, Ray. You got people, working here. You, you yourself, I called. What, what are you talking about, Mr. Lo? They put you on load and called the city. Oh, wait, why didn't you know? That's my fault.
I mean, she might have just got there or something. I mean...
No, come on. Let me find it. I ain't buying it. I ain't sliding on that.
I don't know, but I know that the thread of the mighty even said that the, that the get-out was still going on. Because there were people that called them, and they told them that they were headed out here. And that's why they were sitting in the line. So I don't know.
Well, we'll let that go, but we'll get back to that. But I'm gonna ask you, since you are over Little Open Street... But I'm gonna ask you a sense, you are over Little Overland Street, alright?
Yes, sir.
Alright, what are we gonna do about that speed over there, about that church?
About the speed?
The street.
Oh, the street? Okay, about church, you got about that? I can call.
He remember where he was, or whatever you was.
I can call, well, my street was being, but they had to cut out a trunk to fix a spotted road. And I think, yeah.
What I'm trying to say, just, what I'm trying to say. No, it never was. And, uh, you're, you're mad, and, uh, what the man that could do.
I don't think, I don't think Ross was the mayor then, when they put that street through there.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But anyway.
When they originally put the street in there?
I, I was, I was curious with him, like, what I learned happened. Well, there was some gravel, that was supposed to be put there.
So I think, I think you were talking about the situation with the park, when there was some fines that came up missing. And so, the, the town rumor was that somebody got the fines in the driveway that we didn't get the fines.
We all been talking.
Well, Miller was here.
Yes.
Hold on, let, let this lady talk, I don't wanna, let her talk, go ahead.
Well, it was back a few years ago, that they had redid, they got a brand, redid roads in the park. They pulled up all the millings in the park, they put them in a pile, and they were supposed to go to certain roads to be redone. And that was one of the roads that was supposed to be redone. And they went back to get the, the millings, and I guess they were gone.
Yeah.
And they ended up...
It happened like foxes. I remember the rumors, because it, they were all, it was all rumors.
I'm not gonna say the rumor, because, I mean, I don't have any evidence to get somebody.
There was no rumor over there.
Well...
Well, there's no proof of it, and I'm not starting that.
I never went, I never went, and nobody knew, and nobody got it.
Not even my mom. But I know what you're talking about.
But I think that's the situation you're talking about.
Are you asking that we get something done with the road?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, we'll add that to the list.
I definitely...
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
And I was already looking at some signs that need to be replaced, too.
Alright, I just have, excuse me, Justin Stocko, sorry. I just have one more thing I wanna do, um, come analyzing the detail. I, I had just kinda whispered to Mr. Anthony, I wanted to know, you know, how long these people are gonna be in this park? And from the last meeting, from what I gathered, that the people will be in the park a month at a time. Well, I just asked him, and he just told me that there's no timeframe that they could stay for a year, they could stay for six months, they could stay for whenever. Right here, under six zero, six point zero seven zero two of the Town of Bronson Land Development Regulations, the purpose of RVP District is to permit establishment of and maintenance of recreational vehicle parks, and more particularly, provide for the location and development of parks for recreational vehicles which parks are intended specifically to provide temporary living accommodations for recreation, camping, or travel use. How is that specific for camping? And when he just tells me, I just asked him, he said they could live there for a year. A year and a half. How's that camping? How's that RV? How's that fall underneath? It looks like a push of the landslide to me. I mean, I'm just trying, I'm being honest. I'm reading the rules, and I'm reading what's said, and, you know, if you're gonna have people living there for a year and a half, what it states right here. I mean, this is, this is six point zero seven point zero two, says it. Temporary living accommodations for recreational camping or travel use. Not a year and a half for somebody to live in a camper trailer right down the street in front of everybody else. Has lived there for, I've lived on that street for thirty years. And I, I, I'm gonna leave it like this, okay? Marty's been a freak of mine for a long time. I have nothing against Marty, I don't have nothing against what he does. You know what? If you can prosper doing whatever you wanna do, prosper doing whatever you do. But you have to think about your neighbors, how it's gonna affect the people that surrounds what you're trying to do.
And you do understand, Justin, that's just a technical question.
Yes, sir. No, I mean, I just, I just wanted to point this out, you know?
I just wanna point out, that when you went and had a conversation with him about it, you did more than the majority of the people that have come up here and stood before us.
Well, I mean, that's the whole thing, you know? This is, this is, you're talking about two or three hundred people at certain times all within a little area around the whole residential neighborhood.
And I, I, I'm not saying anything about what you're saying, but you do understand that's a commercial piece of law. Whoa.
I understand, first of all, I'm talking about fifty residents.
Somebody could put a, a, a commercial, somebody could put a truck stop in there.
So, okay, what I understood was the first property was commercial, and then it was no different from behind.
Have you, I mean, you do understand what we're talking about.
I understand what you're talking about.
And also, again, the legal aspect of what we're going into here. He has, he has to, he has to.
And so does everybody, everybody has to, but you know what?
So, what I'm saying is, in, in, in response to Ray talking about fifty or a hundred people, you can go down here right now. Any of these commercial places that you go into, there before you get the people in there at any one time. But I obviously, you don't know what they offer.
So let them build one of those, a router on it.
Yeah, it'd be impressive.
And I, I, you know, the argument that you're using, the argument that you're using here is...
Follow the guidelines, follow the rules.
Right, right, please.
Follow the rules, he just read it to you.
Right.
Ray, come on. He just read it to you.
Yes, he did, yes, he did.
I understand that, and we're gonna go by the rules, we're gonna follow the rules.
And I understand that. My main thing is, okay, I, I, I didn't, now, now, Mr. Ross, I, look, I don't have, I, I'm not trying to make any enemies, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to do anything. You know what I'm doing here? I've lived on this street for thirty years. So has Tyler, Tyler's lived on it for as long as he's been alive. I, I've known him, he's been my neighbor, you know what? So, everybody's lived on this road. They don't, everybody else on there, they said that, you know what? They're not looking for this kind of action to happen. And what I'm here to express is that, you know what? Just going down two streets of other roads is not by my street. One person on one street, and one person on the other street said, sure, thank you. Every other one's time. So, do it and do it, okay?
Do it and do it.
Thank you, sir. Alright, uh...
Anthony.
No, I had...
Sorry, I have a last tip for you about this issue, for short-term leases. Stayed for, stayed six months. Renewable after that month by month. So it doesn't have to stay six months and then take out, you can renew it. But some people, they can do twice, as long as they drive out of the park and drive back. That's another six months.
That's true, so you can, you can argue that.
That's how everything is. So, I guess give my opinion on this.
We're gonna, we're gonna look at that, and if people stand, the other one that's been there, it's a code violation, and the Code Department Court is gonna handle that.
Six months, and then after that, month to month, they can evict you anytime, but you can stay if you want.
Sometimes, uh, you say you can only stay for six months?
I don't know. I haven't read the law, it's a, it, it, I moved it so with our lawyer.
Somebody need to, where is the lawyer? That's a no.
Right there. Where is the lawyer?
Where is the lawyer?
He's on Zoom.
I'm with him, I'm with him, he's old. And I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you. I got another time.
Well, good.
Alright, Anthony, you have the floor. Counsel, thank you. Miss McGinnon, I didn't know anything about the twenty-five spot, thank you. Um, so, let's see, so somebody was speaking about, um, septics. It said, um, one septic for a half acre. There's eight acres, that's sixteen septics. There's gonna be roughly eight sep, uh, eight RVs on one septic, so that covers that. Um, as far as the spots go, if you look in, let's see, um, section six point zero seven point zero two, subsection E, number two, the maximum density for a recreational vehicle park shall be eighteen spaces per gross acre. A gross acre means all land within a given boundary. So technically, if we wanted to do it by that section, there could be a hundred and forty-four spots there. We don't wanna do that. We're not coming here to tear the town up. Again, I grew up here, I know everybody, that's near for the most part. We're not coming here to tear any town up. So, covered that, so, uh, yeah, a hundred and forty-four spots. Um, and then, if you look in... Um, so, and this is the ordinance, number seventeen dash twelve, section sixty dash five thirty-one, subsection C, uh, one C, one C. Um, let's see, in order to be allowed to convey RV lots or sites to individual owners by the means identified above, a park must have a minimum of fifty sites. We're asking for fifty sites, which is what, um...
JP Laurie.
JP Laurie suggested.
So that was the reason for asking for fifty, was the minimum?
No, well, no, so originally, we were gonna go for forty. But my thing is, I prefer to go for ten to twenty more. We're not gonna do ten to twenty more. But if we wanted to, we'd be, we'd be able to. But again, we're not here to turn this place into a dump. First off, we cleaned the dump up, that was there. I don't know if anybody's driven by that prior to us clearing, but it looks much, much better. There were five or six, seven, um, semi-trailers out there falling apart, full of oil. So, I mean, if those fifty-five gallons of rum were dumped, where's that going? Right into your water shed. Right? So, so good. Right. Um, along one of the fence lines, there was more garbage than you can count. Cleaned up the garbage, took it to the dump where it belongs. If you got pictures of that, I'll put it in there. Um, but I'm not coming up here to cause any arguments, I just wanted to put that on the record. Those ordinancees, things of that nature. Um, if there's any other questions?
How long do you plan for the residents to stay there?
So usually, um, I mean, for the most part, all these other RV parks, like I mentioned before, Chief one, I think they have three or four. Um, so it's usually the northern people that come down, they come, they stay for probably not even six months. Um, and then they leave. Now, if the, exactly, if they, um, they may end up leaving their RV there for a month or two months, that's gonna be, that's gonna be up to them. Again, the stipulation is gonna be an RV no older than ten years old from the time it opened, not from now. But if it don't open for three years, it's gonna be two thousand and twenty-six, ten years removed.
Cause they're allowed, they're allowed to update like ever, so, like, say, twenty-thirty gets, twenty-thirty gets here, you're still gonna allow twenty-sixteen, or that's gonna...
That's, this, this is the thing, we don't want trash coming in there. We don't want RVs that are falling apart, I think, uh, with the semi-trailer developers and RV on there that was just completely demolished. Um, we don't want that. Now, if you get those, you get those tuna, I call it tuna pan, um, the airstrips, those are clean, nice-looking RVs. It might be a nineteen-eight model, as long as it's clean, dressed up nice, it's welcome back. And we're not gonna have these RVs that are coming in here, windows falling out, window units in the window. We're not doing that. We want it to be presentable, just like downtown.
Like Mr. West in Chief one?
Right. We want, we want it to be presentable, we don't want this to be the flea market. We don't wanna be opening the flea market, you know, like Chief one.
Could you answer her, could you answer her question, though? What are you still accounting on, or?
How many, uh, how long were you planning on them staying?
That's not up to me. They can stay there six months, and then monthly after that, that's up to them. How long do they wanna stay there?
Whatever the code calls for.
Whatever, I mean, everything we're doing, again, as the council mentioned, everything's up to code. Will be up to code.
So if ours is a maximum of six months, six months you're gone, then y'all are okay?
If that's what, if that's gonna be up to code, yeah, that, that will be up to code. I appreciate it.
I have a question, uh, listen.
Yes.
Why isn't that camera working?
Camera is working.
It is, or they showing up? It is open against the wall, it is.
Space and red at me.
Okay, well, I'm, to run, I come up there, I wanna record it, I wanna copy it. I don't care anymore.
Can we, is the screen around us allowed, so you can see?
No, no, it, it ain't working. So I have a question for the applicant, um...
Dennis, can you check it, make sure it's working, please?
Sure.
And also for the town council, do you know if you, you, uh, body ordinance that you're trying to pass this under, that if you approve it, and he builds this thing, he can sell each individual lot by itself? If he has fifty, fifty slots, do you know that? Yeah, body ordinance, he can, if he forms a condo association.
I already went to Lewis and Lewis, that's not allowed.
How come the Jim Lewis is reporting?
Can he sell them?
Yeah.
In the staff report? Yeah.
You don't have to worry about it.
The attorney ordered it, anyway.
Yeah. If I get the ordinance, it's not, that's not in staff report. I specifically asked him about that. He's not allowed to sell those lots.
Say, on approval, we can also make, we can also make things that have to follow. So if we say pending approval, you're gonna know that we're not allowed to sell the document.
Well, you can't, in my, in my view, by the law, what you wanna go by the law, follow the rules, right? You can't approve, you can't approve this thing that has an ordinance that says he can sell the lots and then turn back around and say, this is a condition.
You can.
You can?
Absolutely.
For Mr. Warren. Mr. Warren, it looks like, where is our attorney?
He's on Zoom, he's on Zoom.
Zoom, where, where was Zoom you?
He's gotta turn the light on.
We need an attorney here.
Sherry, hold on one second, so I can show everybody that Attorney Warren is right here.
He's on Zoom, not him.
They're both on you, on Zoom, you can call up later. Because Sherry was asking a question, Elijah, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Elijah, look, Attorney Warren.
Elijah.
I'm moved that you've canceled this whole hearing, 'cause you don't have an attorney here.
Can I?
He's not saying nothing.
Cause we have him on mute, cause he was getting back feed from his microphone. Can I, can I ask, can I ask for some respect here for other people in the audience?
Thank you.
Okay? Hey, hey, when you come up here to this podium, you ask for respect, don't you? You broke me down, I'm tired of you. I want you to respect that you talk over everybody else in this room every time you get up here, okay? And it's abusive.
You're abusive.
Well, then, okay, well, you run for city council, and you said, I want you to try to...
I take what I, little things, man, what I asked the last couple weeks when I was up there, little things, man, I asked for his resignation, and I'm still asking.
Oh, good. Time out, time out. Attorney Warren, can you hear us?
Can Mr., the, can we ask him the question?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Mr. Warren, good evening. Look at there.
He probably got it on mute. You can, you can, you can unmute. The speaker might be turned out. Is the speaker on the line?
Attorney Warren, can you hear them?
I can hear them, but he's looking at me and pretending I'm not here. He's getting me a little...
He can't.
What else you want?
What do you want?
What I want, we wanna know if the ordinance, I want a ruling on what your people, what the council wants. See, I don't have to answer the question.
What's the, what are you asking? What are you gonna ask him?
If the ordinance, if the ordinance says he can sell those, those lots, can you turn around and put a condition on, stipulation on that he can't?
Mr. Warren, if the ordinance says that he can sell those lots, can we turn around and put a stipulation on saying that he cannot?
No, no, I didn't ask you.
The council.
That was for me, that was Tyler that asked that.
We selling the lots, you know, it can help.
We're not selling them.
Right now, my opinion is that we're having to say in public hearing, what you're always supposed to have, one.
So, Attorney Warren, the question is, if the ordinance says something, like he can sell these lots, but the council wants to put a stipulation saying he cannot sell them, are we allowed to do that? Can the council say that? Thank you.
Thank you. This is then the council's discretion. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just gonna say, I move that, you know, there has to be an order in here. If, if people are gonna just talk when you're talking, I don't think that those people need to be in here. So I, I think everybody deserves their time to be talked, spoken, saying what they wanna say, but you know what? There's a time to say what you need to say, and there's a time for you to listen to what other people have to say. And it kinda aggravates me, so I move for, you wanna have somebody here to make sure that happens next meeting.
Any other questions from the council? I'll entertain yours.
Uh, yeah, I have a question. I, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to understand. Why you guys don't make them sit together, have privately discuss, to come up to, you know,
A mediation.
front the solution?
A mediation.
That would work for everybody. That way nobody interrupts the discussion, that's what I'm trying to say. The way you can, everyone can present it is, you can work together to get this thing going to benefit everybody
That's true.
and with a minimum damage and yelling and wasting time of people being here, trying to go ahead. We don't wanna stop the business from growing, but at the same time, we don't wanna disturb families. So it, it has to be a middle way. I believe something like that can be resolved in private.
Ultimately, this comes down to the property was not picked up by certain people. Half of the people that live down that road rent. Um, so I mean, this, this comes down to a battle. We have been here thirty-four years. He's owned a business in Levy County for thirty-five years, and literally does work for everyone that has spoken, everyone.
It's not like we're wrong.
Well, I understand, I understand. But that, that's, that's.
Okay.
Good.
You know?
It has to be done in private.
Yeah, it does. Has to be.
And, and the parties have to be like willing to talk over and make an argument.
If you wanna talk, if, if everybody wants to stop, just leave the building.
We can do that.
Okay? We're gonna conduct the meeting here, and we're gonna conduct it right, okay?
That's it.
And, and I can't put raw rules or raw order in here if we have to. I try to conduct this in a kind of a casual production where everybody talks, you don't have to get up to podium. If you go to some of these places, they're gonna pull this thing right here out to you. You're gonna get two or three or four minutes to speak, and that's it. Okay? One time, one cap, one, and we're gonna talk about one thing, and one thing only. And I can't put it in here, okay? So, with that being said, I try to make these casual, I try to make them where they can, everybody can have their speed. I don't make you come up to the podium every time you have to speak. I let you talk over people every once in a while, but I can stop that if I have to, okay? And we can have, we can have an armed guard in here if we have to, to make it go. I don't wanna do that, all right? I, we're all adults here, okay? We need to be able to respect each other and conduct it in a normal business like that, okay? And with that being said, all right, Elijah, what do you have to say?
The people in this town, they vote, they pay taxes, and I think they have the right to speak when they want to.
Did I say they did not?
You know, when you try to come up, you try to come up.
No, I am not.
Okay.
Lord, don't we let you talk enough up here, okay? All right, with that being said, we have to start what we're gonna do tonight?
Right. We're indicating the motion.
Does Sarah, does Miss Sarah have questions?
Can I switch back to Miss Sarah, please, Wendy?
Just gotta switch back. I'm sorry.
You fine, what about you?
I'm gonna click and switch back to my own, or not? I know, I know if you just split screen, one can take over, but.
I don't know, I'm not a.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
Sherry, can you hear? Oh, no, I'm trying to swap over to Sherry.
I can hear you.
Okay, you're not moving, you're frozen, but I can, we can hear you.
The picture is frozen, but I can hear you.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
You said you have any questions?
Yeah, comments, questions, comments, concerns?
She didn't hear nothing, she was like the mayor, she was longer than here.
Sherry, did you have any questions or concerns to bring forth at this time?
No, I think y'all done wanted enough talking.
Yeah, Sherry?
I don't have no questions.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, as a planning board, action, that we have to do. We have to decide where we're gonna move this thing. So with that being said, I'm gonna bring the motion up for sound.
Does that recommend that they come before us for the next meeting?
Yeah.
For the next step? In the legal, in the legal proceedings?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we bring this up before the planning council approve it to be brought before the town council on July, prior to next scheduled council meeting.
July?
July the tenth?
Yeah.
What's the motion again?
We have a motion.
For the planning council to recommend this come before the town council at the next meeting.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both, same? Motion carried. Okay? Two voters, yes.
Okay, so, next up, I'm gonna follow, um, up to, at the last meeting, we had before you guys, the CEI for the Scott Grant. Um, and I wanna actually read what came back from Mid Tower. Um, so again, there's two, this is for the Scott Grant to pave, uh, Will's path. So again, the total amount of the grant is three hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Of course, some of that goes to Mid Tower for engineering. And again, we're working on the construction portion, because it came in roughly two hundred thousand dollars over budget. Um, so this is for the, um, the company that will oversee the actual construction, they call it CEI. So this is from Jared Petrovich over at Mid Tower. He said, following our phone conversation reviewing the CEI ad language, the town should formally select the CEI firm based on qualifications only and approve the town to move forward with negotiations for pricing for the CEI services. This does not involve a contract at this time and does not lock the city into any obligation with the selected firm. A contract should only be presented by the firm once a price is agreed upon. Since there was only one proposal submitted by the deadline, the town should select the responsive firm. And their, um, proposal is one of the G B C writing for you guys. I've attached section four of the CEI ad. It states the steps following ranking and selection by the town. It states, quote, "The town shall negotiate a contract with the top-ranked firm for professional services at compensation which the town determines is fair, competitive, and reasonable. The firm receiving the award shall be required to execute through the negotiation certificate stating the wage rate, wage rates, and other factual unit costs supporting the compensation are accurate, complete, and current at the time of contract and vote. If a reasonable price or a price within budget cannot be agreed upon, then the town can re-advertise or move in another direction to secure the F D O R required CEI services for the project. From the grant agreement, the CEI services budget is a maximum of twenty-seven thousand five hundred." So what Mid Tower is looking for you guys to do is to accept the proposal from the only bidder that we had, which was from North Ford Professional Services. They will then negotiate with that firm for the CEI services to a maximum of twenty-seven five. If they can't come to some sort of agreement, opt for twenty-seven thousand five hundred, then they would go back and we would rebid. Which is actually what we're doing for the construction. We have to rebid because right now our loan's paid, it's two hundred thousand over. And again, you gotta remember, this is because this, they reminded us today, this was actually, this grant agreement was written in twenty-twenty, probably pre-code, imagine. So a lot has changed in three years. Right. So three years ago, you could pave a road that was not even a half, you know, half mile for three hundred and forty-three thousand. You know, now it takes double that to build a road that's not even a half mile, so.
Well, I remember we come from the episode here, who was talking about that road, and it was just gonna go to that curve.
Correct, as a breakdown, correct.
It went to that curve. But when I talked to our commissioner, me, I think, he always told me he waiting on us, you. Uh, I think, I think they gonna give us some money too, is that right, or not?
Not money, we talked to him about paving the rest of it after this gets paved.
Right.
So they would be continuous.
So he is gonna do it.
No.
I haven't agreed to that yet, but.
They haven't agreed to, they've gotta pass it too. With the prices we are right now, I don't know. You know?
So we need to accept this.
You can accept it, so they can go back, but, but he is up for election.
So, yeah, 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 yeah. Good point.
Keep that in mind.
With that being said, I'm.
I make a motion that we accept the proposal from North Ford Professional Services, that's it.
From the committee's second, all those in favor, signify the same, aye?
Aye.
Good, so, same, motion carried.
All right. Next up, we had a conversation, maybe it was in the last meeting, regarding how much money we have taken in from the fire assessment. So I asked Michelle Mayford, tax collector, who's my thing probably, really, tax collector. Um, so at the end of your packet after that proposal, um, has a breakdown. Right now, we've taken in sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. And in our budget, um, general fund, we budgeted fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. So, we're pretty much on target for the proposal. So that's good news.
What's gonna do with it?
What are we gonna do with it?
Buns of fire, Barbara.
Fire. That's a discussion.
All right, last up on my list today is sort of a request, I mean, I just wanna talk this through with you guys. I got a request from Kevin Smith, he's the general manager for G F L, about the possibility of changing their service days. They currently service the town Bronson, right? Now it's Tuesdays and Fridays, as everybody knows. And they would like to know if they're open to changing that to Monday and Thursday. Tuesday, Friday, does that work? Tuesday, Friday, Tuesday, thank you, Tuesday, Friday, to Monday, Thursday. Um, I mean, we have had issues with G F L, I'm gonna be honest with you. We continue to have issues with G F L. Um, we get a lot of calls on Tuesdays and Fridays of residences that were missed, or, you know, trash has come out the top of the truck. Um, and of course, our contract is up with them. Um, giving call is coming before the council next month, on the twenty-fourth, to talk about renegotiating about a contract, um, which you guys, of course, can do. Or we can go back up to bid, but, you know, I told him that would be up to the council, if you guys want to change the dates, or if you want to keep them the same. But they're trying to do something to help us with our issues that are happening.
If they change it, change the days.
I don't, I, maybe it's because of the driver, I don't know. We had issues with the driver, I know they replaced the driver, I, I, trust me, we've gone back. The mayor and I have met with, with Kevin, the general manager. I mean, we've done quite a bit in the last six months or so to try and get them to fix mirror Tuesday.
Replace steel in the car, that's what I said.
I think we moved to Thursdays too, because it then gives them an entire day to come out that's not a weekend, that they can fix if somebody was missed, if something was, has happened, instead of them trying to get somebody to come out on a weekend.
I mean, one of the things, and I think I've mentioned this to you before, one of the things that sort of drives me crazy about G F L, and I addressed this when the mayor and I met with him, is we'll call and say, such and such was missed, and they would say, well, we'll just get him on our next run. So if you miss it on Tuesday, we'll get it on Friday. If you miss it on Friday, we'll get it on Tuesday. And I'm always like, that's not the right answer. The answer is, I'll go do it, like, this day, like, you gotta go back and do it. And so I think everybody's right, maybe it's because if it's missed on Friday, then, you know, they don't have any way to rectify it over the weekend, obviously.
Yeah, a lot of times, uh, uh, he was being directed.
Yes, yes.
Uh, what happened was, it's like where I live on Main Street. Uh, if we don't hear him when he go by, but we see him going down the street, we get to take out garbage, put it on other side of the street, because he don't pick up at one side at the time. You get it when he come back, at the same time.
That's good.
But, but my problem with you, with them, is I have sit on my porch, watch them when they picked up the garbage, and they in, people and stuff flew, and they don't get out of trouble, they just sit right there to go. You see the people. And then, and then the car come out, it blow into that nine yard, everybody up there, all everywhere.
Yep.
Now they need to clean that up.
And I said, listen, you know, I have to send my public works guys that are doing something else, to then go clean up the trash out of your truck. And that's, that'll work.
A lot of time when the inmates come out, they pick up the trash, they put it mowed. That be day trash. It shouldn't have been there, no way.
Correct, I mean, yeah, absolutely.
Well, along with that, they pick up the can, and when you put it down, it's on the ground, white as fuck. What's the problem with that?
That's a, it was.
So you got to. I need to take the fast guy on the ground. I think the V, come on, just say fun.
How long was it, about six months ago, when I called you? That I was on, what is it, for Court Street? And I spoke, the garbage can, actually, the garbage truck dumped everything in the, in the truck, but missed, so it was on top of the truck. Went through the branches, got everything down. I stopped the truck. His answer was, well, people don't know how to put things in their garbage, they put it loose. It was in a bag, I mean.
That's the point.
I do, you know, I, I would love to be here the next time this man comes in, and I, I, you know, I don't live within the city limits, but still, I would love to be here the next time this man comes here and ask to raise the fare. I mean.
George, George.
Limits, is it the same one, or is it the other company?
No, the, the, the garbage person.
There's two of them.
G F L.
Is it the green G F L?
No.
Okay, well, that's not the one.
You have wish.
We have wish.
No, 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 no.
And she was on Court Street when it happened.
This was right here.
I have to say you don't live in the city limits.
No, no, I don't live within the city limits.
Well, she do here.
But I mean, the garbage that it falls, then the next vehicle will come in, go over it, spread everything. Even though I don't live within the city limits, I still am proud to say I live in Bronson, and I still think that the city should be clean.
I got you, Tom, I got you.
The town do that here.
It's that company that.
What's up? What's the plan of the council on this?
I just find one person that had a problem with the James County. And I asked a lot of people. I did, I asked.
As long as they keep, as long as they keep coming here every week.
I think as long as you were to put out some kind of reminder, you know, like, only type, let's see, I just want. Um, I think that was terrible. The people not prepared about the first, you know, maybe the others. But I can find one person that had a problem with the James County, and I asked a lot of people.
So we can put it on the bills, the white bill, we can put it on the website, we'll, I'll make sure.
When?
Up to you guys, and we could do it like.
Change the date?
Like, we could change it for August first, and you probably wanna give people some time.
Yeah.
You don't wanna do it right away, but, yeah.
What change you can talk about?
Changing from picking up Tuesday and Friday to Monday and Thursday.
Monday and Thursday.
As long as they keep picking up Tuesdays, maybe having an extra day at the end of the week.
You can have a holiday following on Monday, do the Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, maybe having that extra day on Thursday, saying, hey, you missed this whole street. Maybe they can get out there on Friday instead of wait until, over the weekend.
Maybe they do that, they didn't do it.
Yeah. And they, they might keep realizing they've been.
All right, what's the plan for the council?
Then we need to vote, we accept what a change.
Most of the children, change the trash days to Tuesdays. No, from, from Tuesday to Fridays to Mondays and Thursdays.
So what's happening with other people? What's happening with other people?
What other people?
Well, you, you got, uh, I got Tuesdays and Fridays. Some people got Mondays and Thursdays, so are we forgetting all those people? So all you can get on those people.
Who got Mondays?
Unless you wanna have a Monday and Thursday.
And they get a supply through the town of Bronson, everybody gets picked up on Tuesdays and Fridays.
I think, I think what you're talking about, Liza, you talking about, uh, commercial dump. They pick them up a different way.
Yeah, mine's on Tuesday.
You ain't got no commercial dump.
No, no.
I think they pick commercial dump real different way.
They're commercial, not the garbage.
This is, I believe they're turning on the president.
Yeah.
Why, I got a motion.
That's it.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's good. All those in favors. They can probably sing out.
Aye.
Say, what do you want?
What day, when do we want to start? What are we in? We're in? We're in the June?
No, we're in July.
We're in, we're in July.
August first, we assume, so I got that.
Is that August first? First week of August?
All right. Curtis is not here. Dennis, talk to us.
That air water pressure.
Come here, come here, let me tell you something. Because I keep hearing about water pressure, water pressure, water pressure. The water pressure at the firehouse, just so everybody understands it, was not the water pressure going into the firehouse to supply water to the firehouse itself. It was the water supplying to the fire suppression system, which requires a lot more water than what the hydrant system is putting out. So that's what the holdup was on it. We now have that hot, that wetland, which is pumping over a thousand gallons a minute, which is putting in plenty of water into the firehouse plus being able to do everything else with it. That is fixed. But that's what it was. It was not the actual, inside it, we couldn't move in because there was no water going to the sprinkler system. And by statute, it has to have water going to the sprinkler system in order us, for us to occupy.
Well, and not only that, but just to add to what Dennis said. The other thing, Elijah, is we used to have companies that would come and get water from town hall, from the, whatever it's called. I'm only speaking if it's not the right word, but whatever. From, right in front of town hall, like construction companies or whatever they were. And every time that somebody would come and do that, usually it was like first thing in the morning, like eight or nine o'clock, we would get calls from Clear Cross Town, two miles away, and say, what, what are you guys doing with the water? And you're like, we're not doing anything with the water. So now we've changed it so that if those companies wanna come and get water to let their tanker, they go to the new fire station and use that bull pump out there. So that way, we are not getting any of these calls anymore. We haven't gotten those calls in months now. Because we knew that those two things were correlated. Well, because that bull pump is isolated, we don't have that issue. But we're trying to, you know, because we are still trying to work on.
But still, of course, what I was talking about, we got, uh, maybe up two and a half million or five things, you know? But at that time, we didn't have the water pressure going up that was flanking on up.
We didn't. We have the volume. We have the pressure, it's not the volume. The lines throughout the city, some, and with valve issues and what, with, God only knows what, what it is. They're working on it. When you take a, some areas have a four inch pipe, some have a six inch pipe, some has a two inch pipe. When you start reducing all those different pipes, you start losing pressure because you're going for different size pipes. In order to maintain it, you gotta have the same size pipe throughout the whole entire city to make it a six inch line to be able to supply enough volume to get out that far to be able to push up a lot of gallons.
So it's cool design that, that didn't do all that.
That was before anybody sitting on this board. That's before Ms. Moon was here, before Robert was here. These lines, these lines been here a long time ago.
Wait. When did you officially move in and start eye, eye running?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know what they do.
I think it was the Wednesday before I went on vacation. It was June seventh, Wednesday, June seventh.
It was literally the day.
I was, I was at a time at a panel emergency.
You got a certificate of occupancy and. Because, in the recent terms, because Mayor Parton wanted to be able to put all of the new equipment into base in our current position. I mean, we spent a lot of money on that equipment. We did not want that equipment sitting out in the rock. An eighty thousand dollar tractor or whatever, just sitting at the rock. So that's why we moved out.
Now that buck was trickling in right then too.
Correct. Yeah. All I was having.
So anyhow, the, uh, we are doing, uh, fireworks should be here. I believe you're signing a check tonight. Be here this week, this coming Saturday. All my guys are going through a safety meeting, um, on fireworks. Uh, I will need some assistance getting, getting, uh, picnic tables over here to be able to set up the fireworks. So are the crews working on, being the fourth, are they working on the third?
Our people?
The, yeah, the, for, for the prison.
We were gonna give the staff the third off, and then everyone's gonna work on the fourth. Kinda like what we do for the balance, get ready. Because we want staff to be here to help with the back toes and all the fun stuff.
That's true. That's fine. We get.
We need help, we need to give it to the board.
Yeah, we just need to help get the.
We can do it on the fourth.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with that. So everything right now is on track on our side. We're gonna block off where Main Street hits Picnic Street, right there on that corner. We can move our trucks there so we can respond if we have calls. Plus that driveway to go back there into the, into the back is where we have to go in with the trailer with the, with all fireworks. So, um, is there what else I wanted to add? Oh, I passed around. Hopefully y'all have opportunity to see. Public's welcome to see it. There, that truck is going to be inspected on the seventeenth, or they're going up on the seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth. It'll be inspected and returned on the.
You know, you're gonna keep being pushed, you know, Elijah.
The truck, at that, these pictures are not complete. They still got a letter and all that. They've been trying to send something to tell you all what, what the truck's looking like and how it's, it's come along. We should technically receive the truck probably in the end of July, first of August. It has to be, once they go up and do the final inspection, they bring the truck down. It goes to a calip. They have to P D I it, which is get it ready, make sure everything is, is far on it. Then they'll deliver the truck to us. When we do that, um, we'll take and hopefully we'll do it on, when we have a meeting. And we can bring the truck up here during the meeting where the public can see it, the public service. So.
Is that a new part, isn't it?
I'm sorry.
Is that a new part?
Yes. That's the one that we've been working on. We've still got a little more we're working on, but this is the end, the four-wheel drive engine. That was being, been built, being built for at least six years.
Built.
They, they were lighting all chassis on it. So they got it all, and you're welcome to take a picture of the pictures or give them one picture, whatever you want, to be able to put in the.
And we got a grant from the U S D A for a hundred.
Hundred thousand, I think, but I don't.
Hundred thousand?
You borrow the rest of it? Borrow what's the money you mentioned?
Correct.
Then, then the rest will be done on my, on the lease. Yeah, that's all I have.
All right. All right, uh.
Attorney Mark, can you hear?
Not more. Do you have anything?
I think it's been delivered up.
All right, uh, committee of courts, uh. Everything you get on my, we still got, we still got one more piece of equipment that should be here. I think the paperwork is supposed to be here tomorrow. I talked to him today and he said that he would be, if he is here, he's sitting there waiting for it. Yeah, it's very good. So, uh, see, we got anything else to do as this, the two of you, what's on?
Um, vehicles, good question. Um, I went back to Jared at Duval in Jacksonville, and he said that they absolutely are not getting any more G M allocation for the rest of the year. G M is giving like thirteen vehicles. And he's like, there's just no way. And so I went back and I said, it doesn't have to be a G M, it could be a Ford. Instead of getting the, whatever it was we said, a little Chevy. And so he said, oh, yeah, I can do that. I'm like. So, yeah, so I'm supposed to be working on getting specs for a Ford F three fifty and like a little, I said, just like a Ford Escape or something for Tom Steph. So I'm waiting for that. I asked him for that last week. So hopefully we just get four, it shows.
All the ones that I've battled.
I found. I found, um, that, they were two dollars.
Why is it so hard to thoroughly meet it?
That's a big question.
I actually found like three.
That is a very good question. You know why? Because this country is doing everything out of this country. They do not have the microchips, is what they're telling us. Computer chips to manufacture. And that's their response. So they're telling us that one little chip is keeping them from that.
And that is because.
Chevy pickup truck or whatever. So you take everyone's work, but that's what they're telling us.
That's because our chip manufacturer in Detroit closed down because it was too to make them in China.
China.
Instead of us making them in our own country.
Have you, have you been car shopping recently?
You do? I really love it here. I already had no problem. I can buy one in the garage all the way.
Oh, a car, yeah.
Well, same, a truck or anything I want.
It depends on what you want, because I went with my mother last week, or whenever I was home, and it, it's impossible. One dealership I went to tried to test drive a Chevy Trac. They had none, one, zero. None, not a single Trac. And then we went and looked at Subaru's, and she wanted a particular model of a Subaru, and they were like, we don't have any of those to test drive either.
So they have nothing to do with.
It is very difficult to find vehicles right now. It has been for several years.
Well, it's not you, but you got you.
Well, in the state of Florida, we just had a law that just changed, whereas for the last few years, an independent person could go and preorder a vehicle for themselves. And our governor just changed that to where they can no longer do that. So that's gonna be big, um, in the car industry.
Okay, all right. So we don't have anything else?
Nope.
We have? Okay. So, and you want Jared to go and get that for you? All right. Mr. Jared, you got anything?
So I have done some homework on our water, uh, project. And I had called, um, Ms. Sheila Watson, who is the city clerk, um, in Fansbury. And she is over the, she's a city clerk. She's the city clerk, but she's also, um, with the Lord of, um, Major Coast Regional Water Authority. And.
No, enough. Many, many times.
She was so sweet when I called her. And I was just asking her, um, any problems that they had when they went through this situation. And she said that the only problem that they really had is they did have some faulty meters. But she said, um, because of the great communication that she had with the contractors that they chose to use, that the project went very well. And I said, well, if you had to do it again, would you do it again? And she said, not only would I do it again, she said, as soon as they upgrade their wheel, they are gonna extend theirs out. So, um, but I just, I was late getting to this project, and I wanted to call and talk to her. But she was very positive. No, so.
All right. Todd?
Uh, two things. One is while, while we're talking about Wilson, I think we call the county and see if they can go rate it sometime soon.
Didn't they just do that?
Thirty inches of rain makes something go bad.
That's a bad road.
I think we do that all the time.
I hit a hole earlier and I think I lost my tire.
Is that one of those, uh, Tyler, is that one of the roads where it's, it's a double name street?
I think it goes from Wilson. As soon as you get around the curve, it's ninety.
It's go around the curve.
As soon as you get around the curve.
Seventy-fifth from Hathaway on, and then when it curves, it's ninety.
And then Wilson.
Sure.
Yeah. It's like three different names. What was the other guy? Uh, I got, um, one guy come earlier to give us some, we're talking about when we did the workday at the, um, library. One of the things we thought about is getting these stumps out here ground down. So, uh, one guy come and looked at it earlier, gave a quote that I gotta cheat notes, and I gotta give it to Sue. And then I'm gonna call, um, another person to do so that we have another one. But it was the one, he gave me, I think it's six hundred dollars to ground out. I don't know whether what I'll, so, I'm gonna get another one.
He says, no ground?
Yes, ma'am.
How many was he gonna give?
Uh, higher than is out there. I think it's like ten or twelve.
But we just ate some.
Yeah, I just had some dough through at my church.
Jared, you thinking of something?
Uh, I think that was it.
Mr. Jared?
Yes.
You got anything to add?
No, um, other than, the one where everybody's waiting for fireworks, um, advertising, pushing it on everybody, you know, so they'll have some people out there to enjoy it.
I think we're the only ones doing something on the fourth.
Yeah, right.
Right, we're just doing like a third weekend.
Some people aren't ready to do something on the fourth.
I think a lot of them, they do it early.
I tried to leave the signs out.
Crystal River probably does it on the fourth, too, but.
I think Cedar Keys, I heard. I think they do it on the fourth. I think that's the only one that I heard. It should be, I mean.
I think Wilson's is the third. Gina is like the second.
Brooke, you got anything?
Yeah, good.
All right. Uh, do you, do you have a public participation?
I just, thank you. Hold on. I, I just. I don't know.
On the third, they're having a parade in, uh, Williston. So if any of the council members wanna go, um, we'll take the end. And I already got some, I already got some candy, but I'll give a little bit more. But, um, I just need to know if anybody wants to go so I can plan it.
On the third.
On the third. Five o'clock, something like that.
Love the participation.
Yes.
I just, and I hate to say it, but you're gonna have to get tougher. You're gonna hurt people feelings. But you just can't let them just. I mean, it hurts me to my heart to see.
And I appreciate you bringing that up.
Just, you know, and you may have to go to the, you know, you hate to do the three-minute speech, but that may be what you have to do. And this, out of all the, you know, yelling and losing words, you know, it, it's, it's really sad. I mean, it just, it really, I almost got in the left, but I did.
I appreciate you talking. I appreciate you talking. I gotta always say, why?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, anybody else? Thank you all for coming out at this time. We'll be, you have a chance to review the bills.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Welcome to the second. If you pay the bills, all those in favor, see if you can probably sing out. Those who sing, most who cares.
You should see how many I have.
All right, Dr. Wood. You ready to tell us something?
Right, me.